Meeting order, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alleged to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Rusty Pierce?
Present.
Rusty Masonic?
Here.
Rusty Peterson?
Here.
Here.
Rusty Berman?
Here.
Present. We have one trustee attending remotely, the governor's order is still in effect, so no approval is necessary. Next item on the agenda is approval of the September 22nd, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented. To entertain a motion and a second, we'll move motion trustee Boothart.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Masonic?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Boothart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no, motion carries. Acknowledgement, so we didn't have anything specific on here, but I guess this is into my sixth month of doing this, so I just want to acknowledge the trustees for working together so diligently over the last six months and professionalism and the village staff as well for making this an easy first six months of the transition. So that's my acknowledgement today. Regular business, oh, actually citizens wishing to address the board during the cow meeting. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board now? Anybody on Zoom, Jim? If you're on Zoom and you'd like to say something either now or at the regular board meeting, raise your hand on the icon and we can let you into the meeting so you can speak. Otherwise, we'll move on and there'll be another chance to do this during the seven o'clock meeting. All right, regular business, first item on the cow is the BYOB license application from Antioch Fine Arts Foundation. Oh, they are here. You guys, if you'd like to, you can come up and just give a brief presentation of, you know, what, why, and how you're asking for the BYOB license for the foundation.
I'm Cindy Condeno, I'm the vice president right now of Antioch Fine Arts Foundation. I'm Carol Soneski, the gallery director. So we have receptions at the gallery, we're very thankful to be downtown and we have receptions once a month. And usually the artists that are showing their work like to bring in wine or their guests and sometimes beer. So that's one of the reasons we want the premise. And they're, you want to go with the second question or you want me to go with? So we don't have any kind of ongoing wine and paint events, but there could be an occasion where a particular instructor would like to open that up for BYOB. They're not usually advertised that way, but we would like to come and contribute that as well as possibility.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions, trustee? Pierce is first, yes.
No, I've got no questions, nothing goes better with artwork than some fine wine or champagne.
Trustee Masonic?
No, I, this doesn't, and I forget, the BYOB, for your own beverage, doesn't, it doesn't allow them to then get a gambling.
Correct.
Okay, it goes with it, so as long as it doesn't coincide.
Trustee Peterson?
I have no questions, Jim.
Trustee Boothart, no question. Trustee Berman?
No questions.
Okay. Unless there's an objection by a board member, which it doesn't appear so, we'll move this to the regular board meeting on the 28th, 27th for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Station 51 liquor license request. I believe the applicant is also here tonight. I don't know if you'd like to say anything about it or just have the board discuss it. Okay, okay, so as, just so people who are in know, Station 51 is a restaurant that's being built across the street. The owner operator owns at least three other locations, if not more. He applied for his liquor license, so that's up for discussion to move to the general board meeting. So trustee Pierce, any discussion on this one?
No, I think we just wait for the CQH and go from there. I mean, you can't have a good restaurant without a little bit of drinks, whether it's water or beer, so. I'm not opposed to it, just got to make sure all the paperwork's done.
Trustee Masonic?
No question.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
Trustee Boothart, no question. Trustee Berman?
No questions.
All right, unless there's any objection, we'll move this to the next board meeting for approval, which again is on the 27th. Thank you. Next item, discussion regarding Ash Apartment Concept located at 710 Anita Avenue. Mr. Garrigan, please present to the board, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before you this evening for a concept, and just for the record, this is a concept. Obviously, what we're really looking for is the general input of whether the board is comfortable with the proposed concept as it relates to rezoning and potentially site plan. What we're not reviewing tonight is the actual site plan, the actual rezoning, architecture, landscaping, floor metrics, engineering, all directly, if there would be support for this concept, all of that would be coming back to the board at a later date. So it's really a very pretty simple question. Is the board generally comfortable with this general concept? So the applicant is coming for you, the property is currently on Anita. It's. The property's on Anita, it's currently zoned M1, it's in the village, it's approximately 8.4 acres. Advocate currently owns a small industrial building in the property. Much of the property is actually wetlands, but the applicant has identified that there is a buildable area. So what the applicant's proposing is conceptually three apartment buildings, and which would be incorporate 84 units. And the comp plan identifies this property as each of those residential, which theoretically would potentially incorporate multifamily. So the question for the board is generally comfortable with the concept. So without me walking through the concept, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Glenn Christensen, the landscape architect for this proposed project. Mr. Christensen will walk you through the concept plan. And if you have any questions of staff or Mr. Christensen, we'll be more than happy to answer those.
Thanks, Mike. Again, my name is Glenn Christensen. Working for Mr. Anthony Ash, Ash Management Company owns the property. Again, as Mike alluded to, that we've been asked to come here on a concept level. We're already with the plan commission, gave them a conceptual review as well. This property, as you can see, actually includes a little bit more property than what he owns. It's the red line at the bottom. The other pieces is the property that I had. This site, as Mike mentioned, it has an existing industrial building on it on Main Street. Been recently remodeled. That compromise is about 1.4 acres, the remainder is 8.7 acres, subject of this concept plan. It's currently zoned M1 manufacturing. The only we would request is our free townhouse slash multiple man. I think the first step in the process, everybody knows they're considered a weapon, partially wooded. Our first step was to get a weapon delineation. That was done, and our consultant came in, surveyed what we had to start. Let's see that. And based on that work, came up with a conceptual site plan. This particular case has three buildings on it, 24 units, 36 units, 25 acres per acre. They have a parking lot that provides. Body zone all the time. Shown an access into the site often, you know. We said divided access. Those access points will have to be. When we first looked at this, it was interesting. Became apparent, a couple of things, one is that there's a lot of multi. Probably most interesting thing is the base. Currently, there's been a lot of encouragement by a lot of communities, including that to have residential housing units placed. Again, we're here just on a conceptual basis, you know, we have a lot of work to do going forward. Project. We think we have a piece of property well suited to use tractor site, shelter site.
Trustee Pierce?
I'm going to try to limit my remarks. I believe coming to the village board like this, whether it's this applicant or any other applicant for conceptual approval, has a possibility of swaying the end results, and I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's before the fact, it should have gone fully before planning and zoning first, before it comes to us. Additionally, my feeling on multifamily housing being in Antioch, I think we've got bigger fish to fry, whether it's industrial development, commercial development, or getting our downtown fixed. I don't, I think it's too early in the process to fulfill the urban housing department's dream of turning us into a multifamily centric community. I think we've got to concentrate on our downtown and our businesses first, so I'm not going to say anything else.
Trustee Masonic?
I'm going to have to agree with trustee Pierce because we had someone here that wanted to talk about developing. They were already zoned to it, and the other board, the note, basically note to them. We had another situation where we got stung by basically residents saying, hold on, hold on, you're putting low income housing in, which may be true, may not be true. And we've got a police force with the same, we've got less officers than we had 15 years ago. Now we're going to increase our density. I would never be in favor of increasing our density without any plan of increasing our law enforcement, too. There's no study of impact, how it's going to impact our public safety, our schools and whatnot. Sitting on what's happened in the past with prior development, I would not, I would never vote yes on this situation. I mean, I'm going to be stronger on my voice opinion that we're down officers per population than we were 15 years ago. And I think this, where this sits, I don't think this is a good location, just going to be more stress on our police department.
Trustee Peterson?
I have a couple of questions from Michael Garrigan. Now, I'm looking at this map and it says it's 8.4 acres, correct?
Correct.
The concept is 8.4, how much of that property, the 8.4 is ours? None of it?
The site, they've identified the site potential purchasing our property in the south.
See the red line on the bottom?
Yes. Right, I, where? Right. Then why is our property in this, on this map?
It was part of the wetland. We wanted to show where the wetland.
Yeah, I think that the answer to your question correctly, the wetlands, as Mr. Christensen has identified, the wetlands have all been identified. So as you know, all our property is actually in the wetlands, so it's unbuildable, but obviously that's just to the south of the apartment.
For clarification.
Okay.
Glenn, why don't you show again, clarification, exact area?
Okay, so the delineation has nothing to do with the village property?
No.
Okay. Okay. I will agree with trustee Masonic and trustee Pierce that I, it's zoned light manufacturing. I think light manufacturing would be great, there's some kind, even some type of business. A distillery would be great, but I just don't think that putting more density right there is going to help the village, and that's why we're here, to help the village and the people that already live here. I just, I, I'm not in favor of changing the zone. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Boothart? Trustee Berman?
I agree with what was said prior. Not in favor of it.
Any other discussion? I think procedurally, then obviously comments have been made, and I would think that any next steps would take place at the PZD board or KAB. My opinion.
Well, we were before then.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you, have a good evening. Last item on the regular business agenda, or second to last, excuse me, is the discussion regarding a business incentive grant request from Little Bean Bookstore located at 875 Main Street. Mr. Garrigan?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before the village board tonight. The applicant, applicants are actually here this evening. The applicant is actually requesting a business incentive grant program. As we recall, the business incentive grant program was approved by the village board approximately two years. It's a grant program, which is supplemental to our villagers facade program. The exciting news is the applicant is taking a historic building, the old Dill trial, building across the street, the original Dill trial, and converting that building into a new bookstore. The applicant's an existing business, Little Bean Coffee Shop is one of the partners of this business. So the front two thirds of the building will be, of this building will be converted into a bookstore. And staff is very excited about that. We think that obviously more retail, that's exactly what we're looking for on Main Street. And as you know, a bookstore can be a huge draw, it can have a real vibrant aspect to it. So staff is very excited about recruiting a bookstore to our downtown. In addition to the proposed bookstore, there will be a spa in a flotation bath area in the basement, which is again additional, and I'll allow Chelsea maybe to just highlight her business plan. I think she did a really nice job in her proposal, which really outlines the concept of the bookstore and her spa and her flotation business. It's very comprehensive, it identifies exactly what the proposal is. But in some substance, as you all know, there's a criteria that staff reviews for every business incentive grant. We've had a chance to go through this and we've identified each area. Instead of walking you through it, I think my staff support, staff report speaks for itself, but we've scored an overall score at 26, with maximum 36. Again, the applicant has identified the overall cost, they're seeking a grant in an amount of $13,345. As I've already identified, the applicant has already invested a substantial amount in a building which was largely vacant for over a decade. I know it's a limousine business, and that business building for many years, but it really was not occupied or activated. So as I've already identified, the applicant has put a new roof on the property, installed new windows, new hot water heater, new doors, and bathroom remodel. They're seeking approximately $13,000 in grants to help them assist them in new masonry improvements, concrete sidewalks, concrete grinding, front bookshelves. The original fire pole of this historic building still exists, along with a portion of the original cell jail that wasn't in the basement. Also portions for remodeling, lighting, a new exterior sign, new floors, and retail fixtures. So the overall proposal for this new business, a new bookstore, comes to approximately $13,345. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea to kind of highlight her business proposal.
Oh, perfect, so you've read the little thing on it. So I know it seems like a little bit of a strange mashup, but sorry. If you saw the building, you would realize that it's really not, because it's perfectly cut in half and the alleyway has its own entrance. The word spa is a little bit, it's just me, I'm a massage therapist right now and I'm in a doctorate program to be an acupuncturist and a doctor of equi patient medicine. So it's going to be, going to be more of my healing space that will evolve with my education and what I'm going to be doing with acupuncture. The bookstore was just a perfect alignment of the universe and Angela needing space, and honestly, that space is a bookstore, and when you walk into it, it really feels amazing. My husband and I bought a salon in 2015, before I was a massage therapist, I was a hairstylist. And we tried to get the owners to sell it to us back then, when it was just a bedroom, a showcase window. And they weren't willing back then, but so when I saw it went up for sale, I took it and told them that we had a meeting to see it at 11:00 AM that day. So this building has just been on our radar forever, and it's such a cool building. The more we uncover and the more family and drop feelings we took out, I'm glad that we have been taking our time because we found more and more richness and history in the building. And like Michael had said, we found the original fire pole hole that we're replacing a brass fire pole in. And the cell is just so cool, and there's actually, that one of the storage rooms in the basement is slanted and it's where they used to put the pole in, where the furnace. So the charm and the history of the building is really cool. And what we're wanting to do is just bring that out and now invite the community in to buy books. And I just get to be the back, the, you know, the support with the building, obviously, and then get to kind of have a little bit of taste in the back building.
Thank you. Behind you is trustee Pierce.
How much are they requesting? Because I think Michael said 13,000 something and the paperwork says 20,000?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, but again, the maximum was originally 20,000. I was originally initial discussions, but at staff, after we went through the business plan and worked with the applicant, only approximately 13, no more than 13,000 dollars was actually eligible. So to answer your question correctly, your applicant is requesting no more than 13,000 dollars.
Okay. Okay, I think this is a great concept. I hope they're successful, and I look at the plans and the work that they've done and what needs to be done, and I'm like going, is 13,000 dollars enough? But if that's the eligible portion, then I would support that amount.
Thank you, trustee Masonic?
Sorry.
Mike?
Michael, when we did the Baluchi building, what did that score come to, do you remember? Because it was lower than this, this is a 26. And I've always questioned these scores, and that serves the seniors, that serves everybody else. She's going to be a massage therapist, do acupuncture with the books in the front, we're doing rezoning. So you understand what is in front of rezoning, that on Main Street, they want it to be, if you, if you're not a service industry, you can't sell your building to anybody that's not a service industry. You got to have that bookstore there in order to help to transfer that over, that passes, that's what they want. I wouldn't pass that, but that's what they want. We turned down, we turned down, I didn't turn it down, but I got outvoted for a medical facility that served their seniors, that gave COVID shots to help our seniors in our public service for a facade grant. That ended up to be some bad words by that family. So, you know, you're, what you're doing in the back room, I get there's a bookstore in the front, but I can't support this because the Baluchi building wasn't done. If you're doing kind of a similar practice, when you're doing the healing in the back room, the massages and you're going to do acupuncture in the back room, when the, when the family practiced the Baluchis, we're giving out COVID vaccines. They got 50 employees in the downstairs with medical records, I just don't, I just don't get the scoring. So nothing against you, I understand that building, I just don't get the scoring, it just doesn't make sense. I can't support when that building then get covered and we're going to do this building, it's just. We got a gentleman here that we gave a hard time to on his building. Which, which, that made sense, I voted yes for that, and it just doesn't make sense in the scoring. So nothing against you, I hope, I hope you succeed, I just don't understand the scoring of these things.
Thank you, and trustee Peterson, comments please?
I agree with Scott Pierce on this. I think it would be a good thing for us, the bookstore, you entered the bookstore off of Main Street. And I believe you can enter the bookstore off of the alleyway as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And whether or not the reason for it, the bookstore is there. And I really believe that that's going to bring in the sales tax and book traffic, and that's what we want. I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, trustee Boothart. I agree with trustee Peterson. Since I've been here in Antioch, that building's been sitting vacant.
Since I've been here in Antioch, that building's been sitting vacant. Welcome to Antioch. And so anything that we can do to, to help you in this process on board, because I just want to see some storefronts come in and. The healing center thing sounds very interesting and why I thought that was really interesting. So good luck to you and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Trustee Berman.
Can I hold a comment instead of, or I don't have?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna.
All right. Any other comments? I don't believe so. So unless there's an objection, we'll move this to the next board meeting on the twenty seventh for approval. All right. Thank you. All right. The fifth item on the regular business agenda. I am going to ask that that item be removed from the agenda based on the staff meeting today and the meeting with Lakota Group and the environmental group. We need to do some further investigating the use of those federal funds for projects. So Joy and Zeta are going to work on getting us a proposal for the next meeting of, you know, several options of that fund, those funds. So unless there's an objection, I'll remove that from the agenda. Any other business for the cow? All right. If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No more.
So moved.
Second, Trustee Peterson, second Trustee Luthard, roll please.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a three minute break and we will start the regular meeting. Thank you.
Let me get my glasses.
Let me go wash.
Yeah. I gotta get another set. I have. I.
No.
I got golf tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, I golf Saturday, I golf Sunday. Did you see that in the high for Saturday?
I gotta go get more Warby Barker.
Yeah, I bought the winter golf gloves. I'm going to freeze my room. It's going to be, it'll be like forty eight. It'll be forty eight. We're playing at Illinois Golf Course on Saturday. Illinois Golf Course. The Link Sports. I played Buffalo Grove yesterday. What's that? I bring my computer, I put it in the golf cart. Hold on. No reason. Yeah. Why don't, why don't we have the, hey?
Please.
I'm here.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Peterson?
Here.
Trustee Luthard?
Here.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Domenack is absent. Mayor Gerg.
Present. Thank you. Again, first item on the agenda tonight is a mayoral report. We have more appointments for the park board. We had two alternates that are now on the full board and we are replacing the alternates with two new people. So if the clerk wouldn't mind calling up the two new members to swear them in. We have appoint Samantha Mish as alternate to the park board with a term ending twenty twenty three and appoint Christopher Hartman as an alternate to the park board with a term ending twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Trustee Pierce? Motion by Trustee Luthard, second by Trustee Peterson. Discussion.
No, I think, I think it's great.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
I think it's great too.
Trustee Luthard?
No discussion.
Trustee Berman?
No comment.
Okay. Roll call please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luthard?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. Would you mind coming up here so that the clerk can swear you in, please? Congratulations. Don't feel like you have to sit here. All right. So any citizens wishing to address the board for the regular board meeting, whether in the room or on Zoom? Again, is now, now is your chance. If you're on Zoom, to either raise your hand or put the raised hand icon in the box. And Mr. Moran will let me know if there's anybody. Give it a minute. Anything? All right. Nothing yet. If it does pop up, let me know. We'll continue to move along. Next item is the consent agenda. Approval of the September twenty one is approval of the September twenty second, twenty twenty one regular meeting minutes as presented. Number two is approval of a resolution authorizing a special event liquor license for the Antioch Royal Moose, Loyal Order of the Moose number five twenty five for the Village of Antioch Harvest Fest waiving all fees, resolution twenty one dash sixty nine. Third one is an approval of a resolution waiver, waiver of fees for the Antioch Library proposed edition in the amount of one hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, resolution twenty one dash seventy. Number three removed from the consent agenda, leaving items one and two for consideration. Do I have a motion and a second to approve items one and two on the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion, Trustee Peterson, second Trustee Luthard. Any discussion? Roll call. Thank you.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luthard?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no. Motion carries. So I'm going to move this item to the first item on the regular business agenda now. First item on the regular business agenda is now the approval of a resolution approving a waiver of fees for the Antioch Library proposed edition in the amount of one hundred and twenty nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, resolution number twenty one dash seven zero. Mr. Garrigan, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. On this matter, company for you, pursuant to previous discussions with the village board. As you well know, the Antioch Library is doing a nine thousand square foot addition. The village board did approve the site plan and PUD pursuant to an original correspondence, which was submitted concurrent with the original application. The applicant did request a waiver of all applicable fees because they are not a governmental body. The proposed project itself, based on the submittals of their bids, comes to over six million, four hundred and eight thousand, zero five seven dollars. I have Director Drinka actually is here to answer any questions. But based on our building code ordinance, it's two percent for commercial buildings. We have two classifications, residential or commercial. This is clearly not a residential building. So we did calculate the two percent based on the overall proposed project. It comes to over a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. In addition, we, the applicant did seek a waiver of their original application fees for a site plan review ordinance process, which is being done retroactively. So the overall, again, waiver request would be come to a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Now, there is a question, fair question, you know, is this out of pocket? The only out of pocket expenses relating to this would be obviously our plan review. The building plans are, are in the process of being completed and we'll have to have a plan review. By, that, that will be complete in-house. That will be a normal part also of our building inspector's job duties. So that, that is the major out of pocket expense. But again, as you well know, we did approve an ordinance agreeing to waive governmental and not-for-profit fees subject to those being put on the consent agenda. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce.
I got no questions.
Trustee Mason?
I pulled this because we're giving free money to the township. This, this would pay for a police officer one year. We're giving free money to Wisconsin residents that use that library. Doesn't make sense to the constituents of Antioch. It's already, it's already taxed money in township. It's already taxed money for the village residents. I'm agreeing with what you said. I thought about this. It doesn't make sense. It's coming out of everybody's property taxes in the township and the village. This one just does not make sense. Other people are going to use it. Why did the village eat the cost? Not receive this revenue? Just doesn't, in this aspect, if it was ten thousand dollars, five thousand, yeah. This is a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars that the village could use to fix some potholes, buy some, buy, buy some new public works vehicles. We have a need for a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. This is money that's already been used on the tax road. It got voted in. This should be, if we don't take it, they're going to use it for something else theoretically or whatever. So it just, it just does not make sense to give up this money. So that's, that, that, and I, and I understand the agreement, but it's a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. So I would not be in favor of raising a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
The reason it's a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars is because of the size of the building. It's, it's a mathematical calculation. The people that are going to use this building, yes, they live here. And there are people from other communities. We can go to the Whiteville Library. If you've got a library card, you can go to any library you want. And, and you know, that's always been that way. We can go and visit any library. A hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars is going to buy a lot of children's books as well. And it's going to pay for a lot of programs for the kids. And that's why this passed. It was for the kids. It was, they were going to redo the entire children's section of that library. That's where this money's going. And I don't have any problem with this one. We do have a need for police officers. We do have a need for police cars. We also have a need for this library. And this town came out and voted for it. And I'm behind them a hundred and ten percent. So that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Trustee Luthard?
I agree with Trustee Mason. Large dollar amount. And I understand the calculation of it. I also understand that the taxpayers approved the additional tax dollars for the library through the referendum. And they didn't approve us giving a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars away. Same time. That being said, my biggest concern isn't a hundred and twenty eight thousand. It's that we cover our out of pocket costs from the village. So I guess Mike or Ben, if you can respond to how we make sure that we're not going in the hole to give away the, these fees. Because these fees would normally cover our out of pocket expenses on a project of this size, correct?
Correct. So this would effectively waive the fees associated with the building permit and the zoning position. We still have the ability, a project of this size, to get an escrow account established. If we had out of pocket expenses, if we had to hire a special team inspectors or an engineer or legal, whatever, we, we still have the ability and I would recommend that we do establish an escrow account that we are not out of pockets if we had to bring in professionals or something like that to cover the inspection side. So that, that would be my recommendation. We do that frequently with subdivisions. They have a permit fee and they also set up an escrow account to cover our inspection and legal and other things. But that's what I would recommend in this case.
By approving this though, are we proceeding that and waiving that? Or do we need to get that in place before approving it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you are waiving the village's ability to require an escrow account for a project like this. I think for ordinance, we can require escrow.
We could also make it part of the motion. Yeah. If you are doing it. Thank you. Sorry, James Vasselli, Director. But you could also make it part of the motion that if you do approve it, that this is subject to an escrow such that the village does not go out of pocket for this. And this, then, then there's no question. It's in the record and it's approved that way. If that's what you want to do, I'm not, I don't make public policy. I practice that.
That, that would be my biggest concern is that I don't want us to go in the hole to, to, to something that other, you know, the taxing bodies approve for another taxing body. So if we can do something that or have, we need to make sure they would begin to amend their motion to make sure that we cover all these out of pocket expenses by the village and I would be in support of it.
Thank you. Trustee Berman?
I am in agreeance, sorry, agreeance with Trustee Luthard and Trustee Mason. So, but more so with what Trustee Luthard had stated about ensuring that's that first.
So.
Your, Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask Mr. Keim something?
Of course.
Since he's up there now. When we approve the ordinance or the resolution where we would waive fees for other governmental entities and nonprofit organizations, I, I believe we specifically discussed that we, that was only the fees and the permitting fees and not any of the expense fees. And I think the resolution may have contained that. So I would agree that we need to capture the expenses that we have if we have to hire engineers or inspectors or something of that nature. But we have to remember, we're taking twice from the taxpayers if we take our dip also. You know, let this, let the park. You know, let this, let the park, or I'm sorry, let the library build as much as they can build with what they got approved by the taxpayers. And we don't need to take our dip so that we can justify that it was such, it was an amount. I, I, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna do all the taxing bodies, we do all the taxing bodies and all the governmental agencies. We don't just pick and choose when we don't like the dollar amount.
Thank you. Any other trustee?
Yeah, one more comment.
Yeah, yup, trustee Mason.
But trustee Pierce, it still comes back to you got to cover your engineering fees. What's that fee? So you have to establish some engineering, because we do that to every builder here. We establish some side escrow account. So if we don't, if, if we, if we limit it to no less than a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, you got to cover those engineering fees through an escrow account. Not to make a profit, but to cover the expenses of sewer hookup sewer. At, at any, any and all expenses associated with this building project. This is a big building project.
And I, and I agree, trustee Mason.
So the math is big. The ma, the, the number's big, but also the engineering scope is going to be big for the, for the, for the expenses. No one knows what that expense is going to be. So you have to establish that, that escrow account. And you may say, well, yeah, a hundred and twenty-eight, it may come down, come to a hundred grand. You don't want to give up money and then we're a hundred grand in the hole because we hired all these engineers.
So for clarification, let's see. So one of the clauses, which now moved, you can't see, okay, here. Section one says that any fees related to sections thirteen at all of the village code shall be waived for governmental and tax exempt not-for-profit organizations. Here's a kicker, with the exception of any fee that constitutes a pass-through fee or cost of the village such as tapping, engineering, legal, or consulting fees. So I think based on that, it, you know, we have the ability to set this escrow, which I heard, yes.
So you got to amend the motion. Someone's got to amend that motion.
Who made the motions?
No, it came in, it came in as a drop-down.
Yeah, it came as a drop-down. So I would entertain a motion to approve the waiver of the fees contingent upon the establishment of an escrow account for any out-of-pocket expense, including engineering, legal, cap and fees to the village.
I, I would make a motion to approve this amount and the waiving of the fees for the library, excluding and establishing an escrow that covers any and all physical and actual costs to the village, including engineering, tap-on, and inspections and stuff like that.
All right, motion by trustee Pierce, second by trustee Mason. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please. Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
I'm still writing. Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Thank you. All right, so back to the regular business agenda. Next item is consideration and approval. All right, consideration and approval of payments, accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eleven cents.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second, trustee Boothart. Any discussion? Trustee Pierce?
No discussion.
Trustee Mason?
I look for, I just want to make sure, because I think I got to bring it up in the executive session. There was a book given out to people. That, that expense is not in it, right? There's books given out to certain people? We didn't pay for that, didn't we, the village?
Are you referring to the reinvent the book?
Yeah.
I believe we did buy a few copies, yes.
So I don't know if this is a proper time to, to do it, because the only book an employee should be given is the employee handbook. You agree, attorney? They're not get, they're not dictated by a trustee to, to read a certain book. You're given a book for homework. Trustees aren't allowed to give books?
I don't know if there was a dictation that you had to read it as homework. I don't know the scope, honestly, trustee, if I... I don't know the background of that. I know that there was some discussion of a book. I don't know if it was conscribed assignment or homework.
Well, that's the way.
I don't know.
That's the way it came to my part, you know, my department. I just given the book to read. So I don't think the board approved that book. It was given by a trustee who's paid by taxpayers' money. The only book an employee should have is the employee handbook, not given by a trustee to dictate their work. I don't know if we want to bring that up in open meeting or executive session.
I think it's a little late for that, but...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking everybody to return those books, because those books should not be given. And a trustee should not be dictating the role of a...
I don't recall anyone dictating anyone that we had to read those books. It was given us...
No, 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 employees, not you, an employee.
Well, I don't remember anyone dictating to an employee if they had to do it.
Trustee Peterson?
I recall the day that we had our session, when we were all, our workshop. And I, I think we all agreed with that, staff included, that, you know, we were going to get that book and read the book. I don't think that anyone was keeping score as to who read the book and who didn't. I, I think it was suggested to read the book, but I, I, you know, we didn't want to read the book. We didn't have to.
Well, I got people on the, against the assumption that's part of the homework part.
It's the first I've heard of.
I, I don't believe it's on this.
I just checked our credit. I'm not sure. I know it's not on our credit statement on this account.
I will, I don't see it on this payable, but...
I don't remember, I don't remember the board approving that, that, that expenditure.
Understood. I, I don't know if this was through training or continuing training. I don't know what, where it was categorized. It's actually the first I'm hearing of it, so I will make sure to investigate it further.
Well, it should be the employee part. It's not part of the employee handbook. It's just, I, I, I had a complaint come to me, you know, I've had a few people say, what's this book?
I, I understand. And yeah, I don't, I don't think it's meant that anybody's positions are in jeopardy, really. Either not, in my opinion, so. Based on it, I don't see it here, but any other discussion regarding the accounts payable? All right, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Pierce?
Ah, yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administration administrator to execute a contract with Advanced Rehabilitation Technology Limited for the rehabilitation of approximately one hundred and seventy-one sanitary manholes in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and five dollars and four cents. Resolution twenty-one dash seventy-one. Don't move. Motion trustee Boothart?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Discussion, trustee Pierce?
Where are we doing all these manholes? Is it a specific part of town? Is it an old part of town, new part of town? I know we got more than a hundred and seventy-one manholes.
Yeah, so there is a, I think there's a kind of a color-coded map, but JR is here to answer any questions in that regard. So I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so this, originally going back, we started with doing a study of certain quadrants. Inco out, out east, because that was newer. We tried to focus on downtown and mainly west of the railroad track. We looked at Heron Harbor, Victoria Station, Tiffany Farm, Open Old, or sorry, not Open Old yet. So what we did is we looked at different types of studies with the structures and the sanitary pipe. Before going into videotaping the pipe, we thought it would be good with the data that we collected, which showed that there's a lot of structures that are, they have infiltration of ground. So if we can kind of instead of keep on doing a study, turn around and actually take the money and do a process of this lining and eliminate at least the ionized structure, then we can move forward with videotaping this area and do whether it be a lining project or pipe replacement or whatever it takes. Then we can, we can move on with the study in conjunction with that and do these other things.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Any other questions on that regard?
No other questions, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
Again, no question.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, John.
Trustee Boothart?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No questions.
All right. Roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no motion carries. Next item, item number six, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the proposal from P-Cover Decorating Services to epoxy paint the entire Aqua Center pool in the amount of forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Resolution number twenty-one dash seventy-two. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Boothart, second trustee Pierce, you seconded that trustee Pierce?
Yes, sir, I did.
Thank you. Discussion, trustee Pierce?
No discussion, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No.
Trustee Peterson?
No discussion.
Trustee Boothart?
No discussion.
Trustee Berman?
No comment.
All right, then we will, as for roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no motion carries. Next item is, again, consideration and approval of emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to coronavirus. Ordinance number twenty-one dash ten dash thirty-six. Waiving the second reading, I entertain a motion in that regard.
So moved.
Waiving the second reading?
Waiving the second reading.
Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Boothart. I'm guessing no discussion, so let's just get right to roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Last item on the regular agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing facade grant in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for nine thirty-nine Main Street. Resolution number twenty-one dash seventy-three, I entertain a motion and a second.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion trustee Boothart, second trustee Peterson. I believe the applicant, I know the applicant is here, and Mr. Garrigan.
Yes, thank you, your honor. On this matter, it comes before the board tonight for a facade grant for nine thirty-nine Main Street, which is commonly known as Best Pats on Main Street. The applicant has been working with staff over the past week, actually several weeks. They did start initially hoping to, as you know, they completed a very successful completion of the renovation of, of, of a portion of a building on Park Avenue at no cost to the village. I think that's been very well received. And then the applicant, at that point, proceeded with renovations, starting renovations on the property at nine thirty-nine Main Street Best Pats. And at that point, they determined with their contractors, there were some more complicating structural issues. So we had some discussions with, with the applicant and do, because of the historical nature of this building, directing your attention to the PowerPoint. This originally was the original four dealerships. So this is actually a really a very historical building, which goes back all before the nineteen twenties. So working with the applicant, the staff has been working with the applicant on a request to modify on the original plans to incorporate some historic, character, historical materials of the building. So directing your attention to the natural drawing concept. He's now proposing to incorporate a face brick to the building along with EPIS. The overall total cost of this project, based on what the applicant submitted, seventy-five thousand dollars. And I wanted to apologize, I did not incorporate the original project, cost breakdown. So let me walk you through the actual cost. So the actual cost of this project, I received this yesterday from the applicant. The demolition includes fifteen thousand dollars. There's extensive structural work that's required, which incorporates fifteen thousand dollars. The actual new brick along on the parapet area is approximately thirty thousand dollars. On EPIS itself incorporates additional fifteen thousand dollars. It actually go for signage, comes to five thousand. So the overall project, it's a seventy-five thousand dollars. So the facade's grant, fifty percent, would be approximately thirty-seven five hundred dollars. Because of the nature of the time of year we're in, and because of some of the structural issues, the applicant has been working on this project as we speak. So staff does recommend approval of the sod grant for approximately thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars within our, identified within our budget. It would bring back historical appearance of a historic building. With that, Mr. Scarpalli, the owner of the building secretary, here to answer any questions that the board may have. With that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you. Trustee, come to the hot seat. Trustee Pierce, any questions?
Not really. I think everybody's been commenting on the work that's taken place so far, and they're excited to see where it ends up. And it's been quite a change from what it was. The white flows building to what we've got going on now. And I think, or I think it's exciting to see this take place. So I would support this.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
I have no questions, John.
Trustee Boothart?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No questions.
All right, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero no motion carries. Thank you. Next item, administrator's report.
Some exciting news. We were notified a couple of weeks ago that the grant for the property at Main and Depot here since re-materializing has been funded by the state. And I got some communication today that an IGA is now being worked on between the village and SMC, who administered this grant, and the money will flow from the state through SMC to us. So we all done some information, but at one of the next meetings, probably November tenth, we'll be considering a intergovernmental agreement to accept two point seven million dollars for the stormwater mitigation and stream restoration portion of this exciting project. I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. And then I will need a executive session to talk about some property dispositions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The scavenger hunt uncovered Antioch is beginning on Friday. Posters in front of you, the marketing consultants, they'll be up tomorrow, going to the businesses and putting posters up and, and some decals and stickers throughout town to celebrate the event.
All right, thank you. Any trustee reports other than those that we received, the email?
I, I have one, one item, your honor.
Yes.
You know, I read on Facebook a lot, where are our police officers? I hear from other people, we don't have enough police officers. You know, we watch what's going on in our subdivisions where people are coming into our town at night and breaking into our cars. And I, I will say, our police are doing a lot of work to remind people to please, 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 please keep their cars locked. So, but on Friday, one of our police officers received the commendation. And, and I think it shows what our police officers are doing. Officer Richard Hurtis responded to a mental health crisis. And through his crisis interventions and training that all our officers should have participated in, he was able to de-escalate a very disturbing situation and, and resolve it so in, in the best possible way. And so he is being commended for that. And I think sometimes we just need to take a moment and tell our police officers, we appreciate them and we know they're out there working hard. And at the same time, I extend my deepest gratitude to Officer Hurtis for his, his actions. And that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Any other trustees?
Just one.
Oh, yeah, trustee Mason?
Peterson Park, we got to figure out the system that's jumping down. Also with the crime coming in. It's going to be a haven, so something happening down there that's unsecured area. We got to... It's going to be a haven. There's something happening down there. That's an unsecured area. We got to clear out. We got to, we got to get some, maybe, maybe gray, rust in the ball system. To get attention. But, and I would like executive session to discuss employees and consultants. But I think that's a top priority, because, you know, we had personal loose motorcycle on that, in that area. I think it's constituents in Heron Harbor deserve some safety. The kids are all down there. I'd like Shango a lot. I think that's, I've been griping about that for a couple of years. Cameras we did put in successfully. Village Hall, we got the truck there. We got the one over at the park with Antioch. We got those people. I don't think we got to, that park with that, picture that, that car. So cameras do work. We just got to get used to it. And that's one park we don't have secured. That's the brother.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to talk about property disposition, employee matters, consultants, litigation with no further business to take place after executive session. Disposition and slash acquisition. I would entertain a motion. Again, no further business to take place after executive session. Motion, Trustee Boothard?
Second.
Second, Trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Move into executive session. This meeting is adjourned.